Regular Board Meeting, November 21st, 1977.
McLean.
Yes.
Stewart. Potter.
Here.
Covert.
Yes.
Cottle.
Yes.
Potter.
Here.
We have the minutes of the meeting of October 17th and we adjourn meeting of October 27th. I have a correction on page two. The, uh... Second paragraph says, "Bills due by October 27th." Is that correct? It used to be October 23rd, correct? Or November 23rd? Are there any additions or corrections? If not, the notes then through this correction. You have, uh... Like to write your name on your notes and you pass it to our committee. Red big, under the second page. Oh, maybe that's the lighting bit. Okay, so it was right like it was. That's what we did, sure is it. Okay. Go get our clothes. Thank you, guys. The, um... Bills? Any questions on the bills?
Any questions?
On page three, there's patient funds. The... Are these items left in the chair or is it...
Yes. Well, the chair is okay, though. They usually turn back in the school, so you know, those are going next year. You know, from Mrs. Harrison, fresh off the chair. Items, uh, those that are kept by the school and they're used. They're next year, and the next year.
Okay. Uh, I guess the $500 or $490 for the other beautiful ones were the varsity?
Right. It's the fresh out.
This is something different than what I said before? Or did they just...
Uh, they didn't have anything before. It's, uh, cheerleading megaphone. And then with the... The reason the varsity chair is paying for their own on that because they each got their own name on it, so it couldn't be handed down to the next one. Fresh off from all the rest of the way to use.
Also, I have a couple of questions.
Mm-hmm.
What is the miscellaneous administration in these types of things?
What page is that?
It's on page five. I don't remember. It may be down in the floor, but I'm naming.
Title two, yeah. Title one.
Title one.
Title one, man.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, it's not that big an amount, you know, it can't...
Well, it should be right in the...
I can see if I remember seeing it. Can you tell me what type of thing you see out of that? That's all I really wanted to know.
How about, uh, administrative missiles?
You know, just being a regular miscellaneous, I could do that. Have a different name on it, it's kind of...
Not contractual services, it's not supplies. Let me keep on here.
Okay, then my other question was on, um... On transportation fund on age. But the music department, how... How they did such a large amount in one month?
That was a trip they took to Banvay as University of Illinois.
Which, I didn't know. What are the dollars to do this?
Three buses.
Oh, three buses.
Do you get any of that back on that banway?
Yeah.
That's actually right. Always decide.
Always decide.
Yeah, so check that out.
I'll turn in front of him.
Well, I just wonder what counts.
There's nothing on there that's...
Listen, Jen's in office a couple of weeks.
He's, uh, busy sickly. Seems that quite a bit sickly to cover up. He looks like he's a little sick.
He gets the red.
I think he's beautiful and he wasn't. That's what you would expect in a ninety-two year old.
Okay, any other questions on the... On the bills?
Yes, I have one. Under site construction, we have a bill for eighteen thousand seven hundred and thirty-eight dollars to Bible. And in October, we have a bill for ten thousand four hundred and forty-nine dollars to Bible, which brings us up to about twenty-nine thousand dollars in architect fees. And the estimate had been that it would be about forty thousand dollars in architect fees. And I wondered how this... Yeah.
Well, some of this is working. I think that was before we started on these plans.
How do you know? I would like, I mean, the forty thousand was the sum called to me at board meeting for architect fees. And how do I keep track of what I'm interested in seeing where they do end up?
So what do you want?
Well, I wonder how I could get a breakdown. It doesn't have to be now. Mail to me or...
A breakdown of what?
How much would it be on this? I don't have a bill from last month, I've got this one, so...
Is this... Is this what went on?
I mean, so that other bill last month had been, not this bill, but life safety work.
But we can break that down for you.
Any other questions? Motion's ordered to pay their bills and amounts included under each fund.
All those motions to deal with, we have, uh... Nine thousand nine hundred and ninety-seven dollars and twenty-five cents to eighteen thousand... Five thousand three hundred and fifty-six dollars and thirty-two cents in the building fund. Eight thousand four hundred and thirty-six dollars for anything for transportation fund. Eighteen thousand dollars, seven hundred and thirty-eight dollars for the site construction fund.
Is there a second? Moving to second, uh, any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
McLean. Stewart. Potter.
Hi.
Covert. Cottle. Faulkman. Pittman.
Now, in order to pay the bill, we'll have to make some transfer of funds, perhaps we do a final...
Okay, we would need a loan of five thousand five hundred dollars from the educational fund to the transportation fund. And a loan of eighteen thousand seven hundred and thirty-eight dollars from the building fund to the site construction fund.
All right. I think it'd probably be better to have two separate locations. Do I give those to...
Okay, five thousand five hundred from the educational fund to the transportation fund.
No, we should transfer... Transfer five thousand five hundred to... To...
Education.
Educational to transportation.
Moving to second. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
McLean. Potter.
Hi.
Covert. Cottle. Faulkman. Pittman.
All right. All right. The second advance, I'll give twenty-one.
It is eighteen thousand seven hundred and thirty-eight dollars from building fund to site construction fund.
Motion to have tax in order.
To make the motion to transfer eighteen thousand seven hundred and thirty-eight dollars from building fund to site construction.
Is there a second? Second, please. Second by Covert. Discussion? Roll call vote, please.
McLean. Potter.
Here.
Covert. Cottle. Faulkman.
All right. Motion carries. Um, I think on the receipts, you should, uh, take note that the, uh... Village Tescoa paid for one half of the sidewalk work that was done to improve the ramp going to the road, leading around the football field. Which really is a good deal for our bus needs. And our business.
I didn't see my bill, turn them on that, Bobby.
Yeah. There you see mine from convention. The payroll for the month?
I have a question, Bobby, if you could. What is cheerleaders fund? Is that a fund that cheerleaders have that is allowed money and then paid for something that cheerleaders receive?
It's a cheerleader activity fund.
Yeah, it's money that they pay. We have the board paying the bill and the cheerleaders are paying it back. They have a fund in the activity fund, the cheerleaders have a funding activity fund.
And what about down here, the fund on retirement?
This one is paying at the grade school, whether you had to do the life safety work. And we had some left over and they took it back and we give it to the students.
Any other questions on the receipts? Okay, the payroll for the month? Forty-three thousand four hundred and ninety-seven dollars and thirty-six cents.
Make motion that payroll be paid.
Is there a second? Moving to second, that, uh... Payroll be paid in the amount of forty-three thousand four hundred and ninety-seven dollars and thirty-six cents. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
McLean. Potter.
Hi.
Covert. Cottle. Faulkman.
Okay, the treasures report. No questions on treasures report? Open one for that one.
I don't know. I think it's pretty self-explanatory.
Motion's in order to approve the treasures report.
Make motion treasures report be approved.
Is there a second? Second by Covert. Discussion?
Yes, when are we going to get our extra twenty thousand transportation fees?
It's this year, and we get... This year they're changing our transportation reimbursement. We used to get one month's sum. This year they changed and they're paying it quarterly, and we get four payments of one-fourth of each time. So we get one-fourth of that twenty thousand in each of the quarterly payment.
And we have that in the receipt?
Yeah, we received one.
Well, there's one on our receipts.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, right. Regular and vocational reimbursement, fourteen thousand seven hundred and fifty-one dollars and seventy-five cents.
Only special way.
Right, special way, two thousand two hundred and six dollars and five cents. We'll get four of those here. Okay, um... Motion been made and settled to approve treasures report. Roll call vote, please.
McLean. Potter.
Hi.
Covert. Cottle. Faulkman.
All right. May I say we transfer this work in cash or should we just wait?
You could. Uh... We'll get, we've done some more in. We could transfer it late and transfer it again next time.
Um, item seven on the treasures report, work in cash fund. This is, um... Money that is normally transferred to the educational fund from work in cash on a permanent basis. Since the wish of the board, this, um... Can be done and as more tax money comes in, it should total around eight thousand dollars total before the... When the final tax hand comes in. But, um... It's board's wish that it transferred back to the educational fund and, uh... Sentified in the treasures report. If not, it can wait because it's just sitting there, it sits and never ends. So anyway.
Do we need their money to pay the bill this month?
We will need it this month. And one in December.
Okay, activity fund? We can put that on each of the... Any questions on the activity fund?
You know, I was only there the one night, and it didn't cheer me too bad. I guess the first night was a better night than the second one. Also, uh, included, Mr. Krueger made out a report on their plot expenses. Did everybody get a copy of that? On that day? How they made out?
I... I've got two of the same thing.
They're not the same?
No.
Yes, why not?
Oh, they are.
Should be one without donations and one with, they made.
No, I only have the one with donations.
Oh, well, that's the best one.
Yeah.
Shouldn't make the one without in case.
It's just like real farming.
This is probably eating that mind on your way.
For, uh, benefit of, um, visitors, the, uh... The way they figured it out, they had received the donations on their ten acre plot, they would have lost a hundred and sixteen dollars and ten cents. Their yield average was ninety-eight point three bushels per acre and they sold it for a dollar sixty-one per bushel to Platinum Grain Company. Whereas with the donations, they had a profit of five hundred and eighty-eight dollars and fifteen cents.
I think it'd be nice if, um, Randy Krueger brought them, um... They had to, and they were... And they asked me the other day and he said that the other day was better. There it is.
Okay, are there any, um... Questions on activity fund? If not, motion, you know, it approved the same.
The, uh... Net loss really doesn't tell the whole story. It doesn't have any machinery flowing or anything else in there. Just got out of the pocket. Supply expense.
Is there a motion for approval of activity fund?
I have some move.
Second. Second by Faulkman. Roll call vote, please.
McLean. Potter.
Hi.
Covert. Cottle. Faulkman.
All right. Okay, if there are no objections, I'd like to move to... Item, uh... Ten. D. See, were there any extra copies of the agenda?
Yeah.
And, um... If there are no objections, we'll have, um... Mr. Bible and Mr. Vaughn bring us up to date on the, uh... The building plans. Go.
Okay, we have complete set of plans out to the contractors and we have two sets that we're going to leave with you tonight. We'd be happy to answer any additional questions or anything. At the moment, we have nine general contractors who have taken plans out of the office. Four electrical contractors, four, uh... Heating and belting contractors, and three plumbing contractors. Every one is, uh... Just when they pick it up for extension of time, and it's automatically, uh... It is a tight schedule and, uh... I think a lot of them feel if they could use maybe, uh... Some more time for, uh... Their better sub bids to their particular bid. Actually, all of them would want three or four weeks. We don't have that kind of time to deal on. I would recommend, though, that, uh... And ask that you extend the bid from the twenty-third to the twenty-eighth, which is the weekend tonight at the same time. I think we have seven thirty? Seven thirty. That would give them a few days over the weekend and so forth. And, uh... Would give them access to the last possible... Still give you time to make the referendum decision. Any questions I can answer trying to find here? They get more if they're to take out plans, so maybe... Those who take them out may not get them guaranteed anything.
How about the steel direction? Does that, uh... Does the general contractor understand that perspective?
He does, and also we've had, uh... Two or three, I think, separate steel directors and contractors take out, uh, plans on their own. Plus, uh, two or three, uh... Pre-cas, not yet. Two, uh... Pre-cas contractors. Also, plans have been put in the, uh... Plant rooms and the quad cities, I mean, in, uh... Chicago and, uh... The south, the area. And in Chicago, they go out on microfilm for a lot of, uh... Some contractors and so forth, so, uh... For those that, uh... Apply to the service.
How would you rate the response to the building based on your past experience?
Well, everybody seems to think that, uh... It's all better and, uh... They, uh... A lot of them are working very hard on it. In fact, uh... We got a call today from a contractor in Arlington. Knows of a very short timescale, but still wanted to bid it, so, uh... Now their, uh... Contractors are a strange group, though. You can't always trust them. And, uh... But I think we'll get, uh... We'll do pretty well.
If there are objections, members of the board to extending the bid to the twenty-eighth? This would still allow us, um... To take the time to run the referendum before the... Whether it's the third, the end of this, uh... This year. I think the more time we have to consider the estimates, the more actual to get a little bit.
You must have been... Know this public numbers public, this kind of stand?
Well, we know it by all the contractors. Well, we know it by all the contractors and it really doesn't affect the public. They've already, uh, by the public.
We don't need to do anything about extending that time yet by the way, so you know, it probably.
They just give us permission. Uh, that's right, you know, if we could get three more weeks, it'd be great, but we can't, so we might have to.
Anyone have any questions on this? If not, most of you, you know, do it all.
I assume we probably couldn't. I'll make a motion that we extend the bidding letting, bid letting period to November twenty-eighth.
The bid opening until the twenty-eighth, seven thirty. There's a second?
Second.
Second by the floor. A further discussion? All fairs say aye?
Aye.
Close. Most are clear. Okay, I thought this would be, um, there's still time for the architects to make changes and specifications. This is really, uh, like your last opportunity to ask Bible what, uh, if you have any particular thoughts about the building or questions, uh, I'd like to take a few minutes to make sure that you're clear on the entire building proposal.
I wanted to know about the sort of heating system.
Okay, we have gas-fired, multi-zone, uh, heating system that has, um, forced, uh, warm air for each of the classrooms. Whereas off of the multi-zone, uh, system, we have, uh, ducts that go to the classrooms and, uh, returns to the unit introducing fresh air.
Those ducts will be over there against that screen. And is the, the principal, uh, is the furnace going to be above the, uh, the, uh, uh?
They're going to be, yeah, each and each end, one above the janitors area, storage area in the west end, over by approximately the science room and so forth, and one over in the balcony area over the shop area. Both, and, uh, so both are ten zones?
No, one's ten, one over the classroom, classroom area is a ten zone and one by the shop area is a seven zone. There are also two smaller units by the administration, so the, the indoor air condition that is worn, single zone unit for the egg shop.
That gives individual control for each of the classrooms. Completely, so again, as we talked earlier, you have individual control, north side of the building to south side of the building, interior classroom to perimeter classroom, the large one to small one and so forth.
And all, all these ducts conduct noise? Anything that's in the vicinity of one, all let, uh, all let conduct noise to other outlets?
And back through to the classroom, so like no.
In this case, each classroom has its own duct system, so there's no chance that one classroom can, uh, get all the ducts raised on the two, so it helps. Well, how can it isolate against sound? Well, each duct, each classroom has its own system, so no duct goes from one classroom to another classroom. It goes from just a unit to the classroom and then back to the unit, uh, different
Then what, did you use this one, the east end for the gymnasium? Or what did you do back in jail?
Gymnasium, we're utilizing the existing units that are in the gymnasium, while they're transferring to the steam for hot water.
And it'd be another furnace for that. Like, uh, uh, multi-zone units are actually, the heat is from a boiler. All the units are fed by a boiler, hot water system that's a gas-fired boiler, so there's one, basically one unit that feeds all of the heating units. And that's, uh, uh, two million each unit boiler in that gymnasium area. So we have basically one furnace. Oh, there's another heat exchanger over the janitor? Right, so there's a heat exchanger in the multi-zone unit by the janitor, heat exchangers in the multi-zone unit by the egg shop, and then each, uh, the two units in the administration and also have heat, so they're all fed by hot water from this one boiler system. Well, if you have hot water, um, then it'd be a little more direct to have fan cooling instead of forced air.
Problem with the fan control, uh, and the way that, uh, we have the walls burned up high on the outside, fan control, uh, units normally sit relatively close to the floor and irrigate air to an object, we all burn that so forth. So we have that problem that we have to face with and put the fan control unit up close to the ceiling with our roof burning, essentially. So it doesn't become a very astronomical, uh, treatment with the fan control unit then.
Have the, uh, has the state specification reduced the amount of outside air that we have now that they're considering the center? It used to be, what, five percent? They haven't, they, they reduced to, yeah, that's. All right, could this be cut down to three percent outside air if they turn it up within that? Yeah, because it's all controlled by separate dampers to the classrooms, so those are the outs, the outside air, it's in a real discontrol. And particularly like, of course, an outside, like a check down is when it's specified to, where the outside air is open shut off, so it's nice and, uh, heating outside air, but you don't even have to set motion, any pressure. These individual room thermists, that's, they have lots of them?
They're well, yeah.
They have, yeah, there's some, some, uh, uh.
We also have, uh, taken the plans, uh, to Mr. Ruben King at the state office. He, I've gone over the plans, I think. He's approved everything, but I have no idea when he'll get a letter from him.
Well, are you going to use the same group system radiation in the gym?
Yes, right.
And that, is it going to school? Right, that's right, a lot of change traps and there's some applications to those files. Yeah, but don't you have an enormous amount of heat that goes in and it's not circulating? No, no, because there's, there's valving, you know, set it off, it's not, it's hard to. Yeah, but when you shut it off, that, that radiates, uh, tremendous amount of water. The steam puts heat in almost immediately, but hot water keeps on feeding until it's off.
But, but, no, I don't think they'll have a problem with changing all, you, you essentially change by, uh, basically piping up the, uh, the unit from, uh, set pot water back, uh, back to the boiler.
The turbine has to be big.
Yeah.
No, but, but, but the rate, the, the radiation is all full of water all the time. And water has a tremendous specific heat. Uh, and when, when, when the zoning control shuts off, the, uh, flow to given area, it'll still have, it'll still stay hot for a long time if it's full of hot water.
Unless the fan is blown out, it'd be hard to see if it'd be changed through any place there.
But that's a fan, correct?
No, you're talking about the.
There's a fan behind it. Oh, oh, you have those little, uh, they're not, uh, these, uh, I see, if there is a big fan for you, you'd be, well, that wouldn't hold, I mean, that's no problem. The fan, uh, just unused heat that can work.
Working on these things, yeah.
Well, I, I really don't know what kind of radiation.
Okay, those are, you know, that's.
Right, there's, they start from zero and go up.
Yeah.
Right.
It's not just a simple radiator.
I should, they don't consume.
How, how do you suck the area, the director below the boiler, uh, unusual heat area?
That's on the concrete slab.
And, uh, you don't have a lot of heat, there is more?
No, boilers these days aren't like those platters. They're low and, so they're much more compact and it's much better and so, you know, you know, heat transfers the air around you, you know.
Before that, ninety, ninety degrees.
No, that just doesn't happen. It's not over the whole match.
Oh, is it?
It's over the, the shop. That's our last, uh, place.
It's a, it's a, what, eight inch slab? Not, you know, hundred slab.
Ryan had talked to Phil Howard about the sewer and running the blowdown from the furnace into the plastic pipe, and he said that you should, um, provide, um, a cold water spigot at the point where the, uh, blowdown water goes into the, um, into the, uh, drain, right? So it'll cool it right there. I don't know if we have that much of a problem now, but we have a hot water boiler that's pumping steam, so technically to make sure that it's, might not be that hot, but. He thought the distance would almost be enough anyway, because he said he was going to use, um, what kind of a drain pipe, was it a steel?
Yeah, it's cast iron.
Cast iron. He thought it'd be pretty well cooled down there. Did you have any question about the insulation? Sorry, insulation, wood. Insulation, you're right.
On that, uh, explain that.
It's, uh, it's a high-density, it's, boy, it's just a high-density, it's an R19 insulation, it's installed between the purlings and the steel roof deck. So you isolate the steel, that's the material in the building. And it's, um, cased in vinyl, so you don't have problems as it's, it's built in vapor brakes and have a problem with the moisture from the air too. It's a wool, so what? It's a, it's a wool type of ventilation, uh, cased in a, a vinyl sack. Why is that? Right, uh, it's, um, it's not. Did you have an extra insulation board on top of purling too? Yeah, there's, uh, also an isolation thing, uh, the roof deck and, uh, purling.
Because the total roof is part of what?
Thank you. The insulation itself.
The insulation, I think.
Uh, I have to go.
Twenty-three or twenty-seven.
Yeah, it's fiberglass insulation. Uh, it's a little denser than the normal, bad type of fiberglass. Now, they're gonna leave a complete, uh, set of plans and specifications at the office. One, uh, groin's gonna take over, take a review, uh, sometime, also, the other one will be mapped at the office and anyone can come in and ask for these and we'll try and find a place for you where you can spread them out and look at them a little bit. I'd like all the board members to be familiar with the, uh, with the, uh, way that the alternates are, uh, presented so that, uh, you know what, when we get the bids in, what the bids are all about. Is there one general area of specs that? Yes, and, uh, yeah, a lot of specs, I mean. See that without digging through the 400 pages? Yeah, it's, uh, starts in page division one dash two. Plays the method of bidding, what you're supposed to bid on. Okay. That'd be real helpful, if you could stop and look at those sometime from now on, twenty-eight. Is there, don't you have any control of the unit during the heating season?
There's automatic, yes, no.
Uh, Ryan, is that, uh, you said? I don't think so. I don't think there's, there's not enough of them to, to cause outside of the body, so. Well, are there any, no, uh, fasteners that go through the, the handbrake to the steel? No metal fasteners, there'll be a few exhaust ducts and things like this, that'll be, you know, they'll be insulated themselves. You want? Or? Yeah. Uh, the, the, uh, oh, the ducts are being cut and, uh, they wouldn't be big enough to be a dam.
Are the showers in the lavatory going to have flow control?
I've looked at all. Water that comes, uh, from?
I mean, so often you turn out a water faucet and it's simple. You know, at home, you're testing how you use the faucet, it gets blacked all over. And like, even in the showers now, they have showers and you give, uh, three gallons a minute, and it goes to six or seven.
No, it's one control.
Well, it's something that fits in there and the water just doesn't come out the same.
No, we don't have that specific, we have, uh, the anti-spall, uh, devices and everything from that standpoint, and plus the fact that we leave a one level situation where you can go from almost nothing up to full force. But from its full force, there's nothing to continue back.
That is not a physical force, that I thought. The, the only reason I have this been for me, because every year at home in school stuff, we have to start screaming and yelling because that shower runs and runs and runs. And I'd be just thinking with children in school, if just three gallons were coming out a minute, uh, opposed to six or seven, and they really like the hot water, it would be saving on water bill and heating costs, things like that, but maybe it's not.
They might stay in there, like it's wrong.
They might.
I think this is where, uh, we've got some information on energy to share, where you have to have a little training program with your faculty.
Well, that is one thing, it's the other session I went to with Serena, that they recommended putting a device in the shower that would, um, limit the amount of water that comes out. And I was thinking, like, in the lavatories, how much water do you need to wash your hands? You know, it comes out.
Well, you can, what the, uh, lavatories is what the, uh, front faucet on, so you have to hold it while you get the water, then it's in itself.
I hate those.
Me too. We don't have those, no.
I'm just questioning whether it would be a good feature.
What would you think of, uh, for a lot of, Texas, or a lot more, or a few?
I can't believe it, but every one unit, especially the junior, they said sixty-five gallons for the unit, and they said, "Good way for five hours to put in the good skin shower."
Like a slug. Probably no more than just a little disc with the hole in it.
It's not, it's not a bad fact.
Put on forty-eight.
Right.
If it's just a disc, it might, uh, pretty soon line up with our water.
Then cut it down to one gallon. No problem.
Any more questions on the, the, uh? I'm wondering about how, how are you gonna control the, the noise transmission from one ceiling to the? Okay, there are provisions in certain areas.
On the, uh, definitely noise area, I think, uh, and administration.
The shots.
The shots, the partition walls go to either side of the wall. Okay, on the classrooms, partition goes through the ceiling, the ceiling comes to the partition, uh, and, uh.
You get sound attenuation by putting four feet on either side of the wall.
Yeah.
Between, between classrooms and between classroom corner. Do that, do that? Yes, once again, it's a little heavier weight than a typical fiberglass, but it helps soak up the sound so you don't get that sound transfer. It helps us exceed a little bit by, they go by SDC, the sound transfer. It helps us exceed about two or three left in the stormy sun. So, at least a little bit of that.
You asked about the walls, the value is twelve. Do you value twelve on the wall?
Our value is twelve.
Our twelve. You is, you is twelve.
Uh, twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight is excellent.
That doesn't include the berm, you know?
No, that's just the insulation, that's only just the insulation. Of course, the concrete doesn't help here too much, it helps out, it's an initial two or three.
Is the list real long of the way you have your alternate bids to see what's on the goal? Will you ever stay at?
Want to go over there?
About how high is that end going to be on the west side?
Remember, the west side is tiered. So.
Right, and I just wondered from the lowest level to the top.
With the landscaping ties. So it can really set up as a feature.
I just wondered how high.
It really takes away half of your wall as a cost.
The alternates are all chained building, you're one way or the other, depending on how you go. The first one is using vinyl asbestos towel, remove exposed agent in the activity area and corner. The second is to omit painting the two shop rooms from a height of nine feet eight inches on up to the rooftop.
What did I give you?
Uh, omit painting rooms one thirty-six to one forty-four, which would be two shop rooms from a height of ninety-eight inches on up to the rooftop. Just an additional one for this.
Uh, I think, Vance, could you mail out a copy of that to board members? Go ahead and read it, but I think you have to. Instead of trying to write it down now, Vance, could take that book apart and take that page out and mail it out to us?
And another alternative is unload the railroad type bleachers on the west side of the building, concrete bleachers in a sense there. And we've also asked for some unit prices, which is going out in order, just to help us during the building process for excavation, concrete, backfillings, and carpet install. Ask me numbers, if you do decide to work carpet rooms someplace, we know what's gonna cost, so I'd say that I am gonna ask for those. Another alternative is to re-roof the entire roof over the girls locker room. I mentioned that that roof wasn't in the best shape, so we're gonna afford it about three roofed it. And then, the final alternative is to omit remodeling the girls locker room or the room facing the exterior of the building. Yes, the only option is just re, like, bother and then, and then, and then, just, no place to, you know, take a lot off.
We do, I'm thinking the unit prices on excavation and backfilling, for the simple reason, we do have several systems on that. We don't exactly know where they're meant to fall. If they fall under a floor slab or something, it's possible that we can span over them. But if they fall under, one of the, one of our columns, we'll have to dig them out and backfilling. So, we're protecting ourselves by getting the price right at the bidding time, rather than trying to negotiate something in the book of day.
You also take the unit prices on some room equipment, correct?
Well, all, all of the equipment in essence is price per unit, per piece.
Might add one thing, we are thinking a base bid price for the general contract, a base price for the plumbing contract, a base price for the electrical contract, a base price for the heating and ventilating contract, and a base price for equipment. So, we are, when we finally get ready to build, we will be heading the, essentially five primary contracts. I feel this is a saving to you of at least ten percent on the contracts other than the general. This is the strong, like, the general charges to oversee this area.
Bob, do you know how far this wrestling is coming from football field? And then, is there a field? The, the ground floors, the building, is it very much higher than grade out there now?
No.
Just the ground floor?
The field is in, out over the old rain pit.
Okay.
Bill, when we opened bids, did we have sheets that we could put down all the bids on, into the primaries?
We'll have a bid calculation form.
How are these five contractors gonna be supervised by us?
The general still has the responsibility to coordinate for openings and other minor things. It's just that you don't have this responsibility directly for the opening of the contractor.
Thank you.
Very much.
Thank you.
See you a week.
Keep your fingers proud and say a prayer.
Boy, give those contractors, I want to help them. If they need any guidance, tours down here to find out what things are like.
Yeah, do a good word about this building.
Yeah.
But, so, we just hope for the best. Thank you.
The ten years provision improvement offering schedule.
Yeah, why don't you just give them your rough outline of how things hopefully go?
Okay, um. Everything would be ready, plan the contracts, the day after, the Monday after the resolution passes. And then, it would probably take approximately, and that being Christmas time and so forth, it might take a little bit longer. It would take a couple weeks in there for the contractors to get their bonds in, insurance protected ads, get contracts, some kind of language, back and forth and so forth, canvas of all, do everything that is necessary. Depending on weather theoretically, the system that we have designed, they can start immediately. And, uh, again, depending on, on weather in January, but it'd be very likely that they'd be under roof in early spring. Under roof in early spring. Gives them very good working conditions to, uh, to summer. And, uh, in the summer.
The summer would be remodeling, remodeling the girls locker room area, finishing up the boys locker room, then the egg shops, the egg shops, the industrial art shops, the classrooms. Those areas, they would be disturbing and they would be eliminated by destruction, so by fall, those areas would be ready to occupy. Hopefully, some of the classrooms will be secured, but definitely those areas should be ready to occupy by fall.
Man, said the end of seventy-eight. Should be completed, completed.
But in any event, during the summertime, we'll have the, uh, the girls locker room, the boys locker room available for fall. Somewhere along the lines, maybe it won't quite go all that smooth, but it'll look a lot. That roof is off, they couldn't go on at all, if it was possible. Sooner or later, they. But anyhow, that's the plan. And it's a achievable plan, it's not, you know, getting, it's not a, not a realistic plan.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you. Let's just leave these here.
I thought that after that, the specs were made for June, could change them. If you did change them, I think we'll be able to renovate.
You can, you can change it by what we call an agenda, which is in addition to the specification and plan. Sometimes used as a correction or as an addition, but does become part of the contract. After you sign the contract, you do have a changing, it's by change order, which is in which you either leave the contract price the same or you add to it or you subtract from it. It does call the change order after the contract is signed, it's part of the contract, it's an agenda. So, afterwards, you have to be very, very careful. You don't want to cut any corners. We're just completely, uh. Billy, you should, you got one now, but he already has. And if you didn't have one change order, so, we shy like. Unless someone wants to add something, uh, that is over and above it. Normally we like to shower, but once you start changing, it's a lot on line. Thank you very much.
As we're on the school subject here, um. What are, what are you trying to give the report for this joint meeting?
Yeah, we put in a lot of hours on this thing, several nights till midnight. We think we've got it fairly well framed up. Got a release here that will go to, I'll take the work tomorrow, somewhere I got one. I got a couple, just a couple copies of it. I guess I got three or four. This one, with some, with some, uh. Anyway, this, this isn't quite the way it's gonna go, but this is pretty, pretty much the way it'll. Pretty much the way I'll put out the paper tomorrow.
You promised you'd put tentative date in there.
Right, tentative will be added. We've been puzzling a lot over English and always we felt we should express ourselves. We tried to get the solution, part of the question and answer Q and A is gonna run up to, runs to forty questions. We spent about an hour and a half there tonight getting that in what we felt was a workable order. You know, something that represented some, some sort of a, and I've only got one copy and mine is all torn up. I don't really have anything that I can give you. Dave will be back, good boy, where's my? I thought that was gonna be a very paper. No.
Do you remember when he sent you back, Mark?
That's what I was thinking, that's the, that's the, I've got so many things here that all scribbled on the same calendar. But I think Dave will be back next Monday night with this Q and A in the final form.
Except for the cost.
Except for the cost, that will be penciled in and then, of course, it'll be in the retirement schedule and all that. After that, I hope you have another press release, ready to approve, ready to go next Tuesday night. Be in the following week's paper. Now, this one I gave you tonight, we'll give them our first, first shot on that, then we'll go to the online papers, if you want, if you're. LaSalle, Louisiana, Republican, whoever, covers our area. Uh, then the first, we'll have a captain's meeting of the visitation teams. Friday, we've, the fifth of December, we've tentatively scheduled a kickoff meeting, that's for the people that are gonna be calling and processing this material that we've put together. And we have tentatively scheduled the Wednesday evening, the seventh, for a public meeting here in this building. And we did that without checking with Vance's calendar, and I don't know whether that's gonna make a collision or not.
Seventh of December?
Seven, does that interfere with anything else in the school schedule?
I don't think so.
We didn't think it would, the feeling was that that was one date that had been held out.
We have nothing.
Nothing, well, then we're okay, we would like to have a public meeting in this building on the seventh. This is pretty much tentative, we might have a review of the building again and then a presentation of what our program is, what we can, what we have put together. And, uh, try to make this program work. Are there any questions? Sometimes we learn more by asking questions than we do by talking. Like I say, I don't, you could, you could thumb through this and it's, it's an unholy mess if anybody wants to look at it because. There's a lot, there's a lot of changes and a lot of reorganizations, but, okay. Uh, like I said, I don't know how many hours is going into that, I know there's two nights past midnight and one to darn near. And then one ahead of that.
Appreciate that, board member.
It wasn't all just coffee drinking either, was it?
Not a coffee drink.
Yeah. Yeah, Sharon's been there too. So, that's, that's where we tentatively stand as of right now. I don't, I don't keep the, the notes and minutes for the group, so my papers are all in a mess. Ruby's got this all nicely in order, and Marty's got it pretty well in order, but that's where we stand.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, as long as we're picking and choosing, they wouldn't want to have your choice on the agenda. If not, we'll move on to the.
If not, we'll move on to the, uh, high school report. Okay, I've kind of combined the grade school and high school report, because Mr. Prissard is in supervising the gym, so I've got some items from the grade school in my report. I wanted to report that the gym had received two coats of paint and invite you to stop in if you haven't been in there and take a look at it. I'm real pleased and real proud of it, and sure, think it's actually was great, but...
They got two coats of paint, huh?
Mm-hmm.
Those are the boxes?
No, it was, uh, the first coat was a base and the second coat was an enamel. Then we washed out. And it was what they were thinking that we did.
Bleachers aren't in yet?
No, the bleachers, I received, they've been ordered and I received an acknowledgement from the owner, I talked to the salesman again, and he's hoping that they be here for, by Christmas, when they come in, we have to unload them and take the old section out, and then like two days after they arrive, the men come up from the company and they install them. And, uh, I'm hoping that this can be done over our Christmas vacation, so it doesn't interfere with any of our activities. Same thing on the lights, uh, they've been ordered and, uh, talked to, uh, Mr. Ditzler and we're kind of shooting for Christmas vacation on installing those, so we can work around all of our activities in the gym. Well, there are, there'd be, I hate to kind of do it individually, because there were a number that worked on it, uh, almost all the men teachers worked on it, and we had a number of students worked on it before we actually painted. We had kids that helped mask around the brick ledges and things like this, that put masking tape on it so it wouldn't get painted on them, and we had boys help the days, the few days that we were painting. I'm afraid I'd miss somebody.
Would you convey an appreciation of the board to those individuals as you, on time?
Oh, yeah, I sure will. Uh, we also received word last week that, uh, this is from the O R Office of Education concerning lunch, the cafeteria prices, that as of October, adult prices must be twenty-five cents higher than student prices, which means that we have had to raise our adult prices a nickel. We were fifty-five and seventy-five before, so as of this week, our adult lunch prices are eighty cents. So, you know, I don't think there's any board can do but go along with it, unless we're lower student prices. But, uh, we've started this week charging eighty cents on adult prices because it's a requirement from I O E. Uh, Al has asked about some way that he could get some weight on a tractor to plow in snow this year, and he had thought originally to get some weights on it, and then somebody suggested to him that we get fluid in the tires. And I don't know, this would be the best, I hope maybe somebody else would, and give us some direction.
Hydrant, we too.
Pardon?
He's got the weight in the tire, fluid in the hydromotor, because it didn't have right balance on it.
Hey, I've, uh, I'll go down and check that out, see what type of hub it is, and maybe this time of year, by the time it snows, I have the two wheel weights that I bring down, hanging on it to help it fit, but those tires aren't big enough that would gain that much by putting fluid in those tires, it wouldn't gain hardly anything.
Okay, you want Scott to take a look down at Bernie and talk to Al about it, Jeff?
Yeah.
He asked me to bring it up, uh, he came in to talk to me and I said, Al, I don't know.
If it's the right type of hub that, uh, I'd rather put wheel weights on there than where we've got both on.
Okay.
Yeah, y'all want to do it?
Y'all, I don't know. Uh, Mo Serres called today, wanted to know if the board would approve, uh, him using the gym on Sunday afternoon, like he has past years, uh, where the younger kids could come in and play. Does anybody have any objections to the gym being used that way? As far as I know, we had no major problems or anything, it seemed to work well, and Mr. Serres said, take an emphasis to be responsible, or I think it's need to have someone in the community that will figure out this time to work with kids like that.
You're going to the same conditions as before?
Yes.
I think we, like, we sent him a letter to sign and let him assume responsibility for it, I think we did.
Uh, I'm not sure, Bob, I don't remember that.
I think we did.
Okay, I can do that, because he would be responsible for it. I think that's what we did. Is anyone else remember?
I was going to say, what were the conditions, because I wasn't here at the last time, you know, I didn't...
Well, then he assumed responsibility for shutting off the lights and...
You did have to have...
And what was the age, then? You said younger students, so I just wondered what...
He starts with like fifth grade, isn't it? All right, fifth grade, fifth grade through high school.
Through high school, I was looking. Only, and there was, uh, no listed, I remember.
No outsiders. And he made the, he didn't, he took out everything, the lights, the doors, made sure they were locked, so we didn't have to have it just standing on, do you? Any other questions? Okay, something that has, has come up today that I wasn't aware of, and I guess nobody else was either, but, uh, we adopted a calendar last spring for this school year, and in our calendar, uh, that we adopted, we had, we would both come back to school on Monday, January the second. And I guess over the weekend, it came out in the papers that all the bowl games, none of them are going to be played on Sunday, January first, they're all going to be played on Monday, January second. And I've had students, teachers, all day wanting to know what was going to be our calendar, and then the phone started ringing, and several schools were calling other schools, taking a survey, I know Bradford called and they're meeting tonight, and, uh, Principal was calling a number of schools to see what they were going to do. Been talking with everybody that I've talked to today about it, I think I would recommend that, that we revise our calendar and come back on Tuesday, January the third, because I don't think we'll have many here on Monday, because we're going to have school.
Grant, I think they're relevant with football, even because Monday is, with the first being on a Sunday, Monday's the holiday for everybody, workers, everything.
I know, parents all may have thought that should be a legal holiday.
Well, they probably will be, fortunately. Uh, Mr. Prissard called the county office and, uh, to see, they knew what other schools in Bureau County were doing, and they said that as far as they knew, fifteen schools were coming back on Tuesday, eight of them at this time were still coming back on Monday, but they were thinking about changing it to make that a two.
Where do we get our extra day now?
Well, we need to pick up that day off of, uh, spring vacation or at the end of the year, if you remember, we've got a number of extra days in the calendar, the last day on our calendar that we adopted is June second. And, uh, we do have quite a few extra days. I, tentative, we, without any calendar changes, I have commencement on, uh, May twenty-sixth. We have our big change.
What's the legal requirement for changing the calendar?
Does the board, uh, take action to revise the calendar?
No.
Change the date, January first through, uh, January second, coming back on January the third.
What about public...
I have to notify the county office if we revise it, because we don't have to public something, and we're going to de-publicize in our board briefs.
Okay, uh, so, Board's motion to motion be ordered at this time, and to revise the school calendar, uh, extend the holiday vacation through the second, January second, through Monday, January second.
Do you need a date when you made that?
I don't think so, uh, we didn't change that, I think we were waiting on the C hours, nobody's come through the winter.
I mean, motion we amend the school calendar to declare January second a holiday.
Samuel McLean, may further discussion?
I want to say on school calendar, is that a legal holiday thing?
It really should have been, I'm sure it would.
Why, I mean, they, they can still get, you know, the spending, and then they can put Monday the holiday, but what does it do to the calendar? For the state calendar, I don't know.
It's hard to tell, because like Memorial Day and the Veterans Day.
Yeah, but Fourth of July falls on Sunday, it's always celebrate on Monday.
Yeah, I don't think we'd be in trouble, but there's just a lot of...
We'd be in total trouble if we didn't.
Yeah.
Uh, there's motion to, uh, change the school calendar. All favor, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carries. Okay, committee reports. Did we hear back from the school, uh, the existing library council on the, uh...
I think so. What is the...
Over here?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and you don't have to get that at some point, or you don't know?
I don't know. I need to do that.
Okay.
We have a public relation policy, we have that on the school, we have that.
Who's was it?
I don't know.
Oh, you mean right inside the door there, at the consulting service?
I knew it, but it was in a book about that, yes, it had, it was a policy book, it had a section on public relation about that, but I really had a policy book, I think it be here for some school, it's...
Jasmine, how much did she charge?
No, I went looking for you.
Were I was supposed to ask her?
No, I wanted you to look at it.
Oh.
No, I wanted you to see what they had there, I didn't, I gave you whatever they charged before.
Have you seen the ones that we have in the office?
I didn't know that was...
Yeah, there's a, a sample, I, okay. Do you copy it? But, uh, it's... We tend to review the kits and specs, that's where we see that, too. The better thing that I have for you. There's two volumes, and they're this big.
The policies that I had written up, I kind of, you know, I must be there and written up the same way, same form, it's all the same.
Well, they have, you know, all the buyers, according to the section, they have, they have a number of things on it, like reading, kids are going to study, and things others can just done, but this one I saw, and I just forgot about it, so now I went looking for you and never found it, and I thought it'd be interesting for two people to look at it, because you've never been around, but it was really interesting. I was just, they weren't...
You should have just got the name of the school, just to have a sense of it. But the, the policy, um, the school policy, I'm going to have to be, um, draw it off and under separate cover, uh, format. It's like, we're going to have to start working hard on it, sorry. Okay, um, any committee reports?
I put that in that the grade school is in full compliance with life safety now, we've received a statement from, uh, Mr. Baybor, and I sent it on to Mr. Hamilton, and we're okay with it.
Speaking of Hamilton, has he gotten a set of blueprints?
That's what one set is for here.
Okay.
I called Larry Nass and bring us that for him.
Okay, uh, reports, comments, I, I, I do know, uh, the way he's mentioned the policy, the way you have some more on the page, did you find it interesting?
Yeah. Um, there are, I'm not very familiar with the school, because just so much, I went to, uh, one, uh, education, an annual, DL, whatever it was, and that was real interesting. It doesn't apply to us, but it may next year.
We've done three years, by the way, the three years, I think every school has to be in compliance, isn't it?
You know, we have a school that will be free in the spring, that has to be the fall, and I think we have to start providing education for them in the spring. I think that's, I think that's the special effort, because I asked about, I didn't ask up there, but I asked somewhere else.
So, the three in the spring?
I think three in the spring, but I'm not probably, and then...
You want to give advance, the students staying after you?
I was going to go and talk to the mother, and whoever, I made a talk to sometime if you were, and I do think we have to provide education to the policy.
What's the tuition on these, because he knows, so...
Well, the way, the way that it's figured, see, we have a co-op, we have a few counties, and wherever the class is, there has to be one school district as the administrative district, there's a class, ours are going to Princeton, and Princeton's administrative district, they, they run the class and everything, they get the reimbursement back from it at the end of the year, they figure out the per capita cost, less the state reimbursement received, and then it's, it's co-rated out, which I have disagreed with ever since they set it up. It's co-rated out on the number of days of attendance of J R students, and I think it should be the number of days in loans, because, uh, and we were the administrative district at Hall, and we had students from Memorial, from UQ, and from Henry, and so on, and it puts a real burden, I think, on the administrative district, because if you have a student alone for a hundred days and they're only there fifty days, you know, we're only paying for fifty days of it, but they had to provide the teacher and the materials and the books and everything for the whole year, and that's the way it is. It's, it's based back on a per capita basis, based upon attendance of each student.
Those, those, uh, regulations are filed through by bureaucrats, and I assume that everybody's chugging.
Yeah, I guess, but this is a requirement, I know, uh, we revised our reimbursement form and policy about three years in our cooperative, and at that time, uh, there were several of us, well, it seemed like those schools that were administrative districts were the ones that wanted to change it, and we were told we could, but that wasn't, you know, my Office of Education requirement, but it has to be done that way, so what do we do? I mean, now, in our case, we're not an administrative district, so it's probably an advantage. to us.
Are they, are they then, are they educated right in their own schools rather than transport them, is that, is that the principle, or what do you think?
I don't know if that we heard, but it...
He, he said, he said the law was reasonable, yes. That's what he said. And I don't think they're too sure yet. What are they gonna be doing about that?
I think, I think the state is just in the process now of formulating their guidelines and policies on it.
Um, is the only place we can put a three-year-old one? Princeton doesn't have a preschool.
I don't think they have a preschool. I don't believe they have a preschool.
Is there any place, Paul, that we have to go along?